Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall meeting for July 21, 2020. I call this meeting to order, and again, please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Present.
Gabrenia?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present.
President Wallace?
Here. With that being said, Chris, is this, we were going to do this just so we can put stuff up on the screen? Okay. All right. Chris has got us under control here. First item on our committee meeting this evening is under building and zoning. Chairman Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. We have three items under our agenda tonight. The first one is the Eastfield subdivision, annexation, rezoning, preliminary, and final platter subdivision, special use, and amendment to the future land use. With that, I will turn it over to Roberta Grill for her presentation.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
While they're fixing that, somebody that's on the Zoom call has, needs to mute their line, if you would do that.
Okay. All right, now we're ready. So, the petitioner is requesting to annex and subdivide approximately 15 acres at the northwest corner of Petersdorf and Army Trail Roads for a proposed 29-lot subdivision. Upon annexation, the petitioner would be requesting to rezone the property from the ER1 Estate Residence Zoning District to the SR3 Suburban Residence District. The development would include 27 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of just over 10,000 square feet and an average lot size of 11,500 square feet. I can show you, Lot 28 would be dedicated, would be the dedicated park site, shown here. And Lot 29 would contain the wetland, wetland buffer area, bike path easement, and stormwater retention area. So, all of this lot is, Lot 29. Staff would like to say thank you to Pulte for working with us, and in working with us, we requested a berm and a six-foot-tall solidwood fence to be installed along Petersdorf Road, along this property line, to screen the homes from the Bartlett High School athletic fields to the east. And then, in addition, staff requested a four-foot-tall black aluminum fence to be installed along the east side of Lot 29, so, along here, this portion, adjacent to Lots 15 through 23, to provide a safety barrier between these lots and the retention ponds. A special use permit is being requested to allow for the retention area to discharge into the wetland buffer, and they are also requesting an amendment to the Bartlett Future Land Use Plan, which designates the area currently as a mixed-use business park and a state residential with zero to two dwelling units per net acre, to suburban residential, two to five dwelling units per net acre. I've got a picture here of the fence, shown here, of the black aluminum fence that would be installed along, actually further south of here, but on Lots 15 through 23. And then, they are, so that our request, they also included a second access point, let me go back, here. So, this road would be constructed to allow access via this public right-of-way, and then, this ingress, egress point would be here. So, at the end of this terminus then would be a gate, which is depicted, this drawing right here, if you can see it. So, they really worked with staff. I also have some elevations of some of the homes that they would like to build at this And petitioner is here tonight, if you have any other questions.
Thank you. Does the committee have any further questions?
Oh geez. The only question I have is the fence that the owner installed, and the steel fence would be covered by the association for maintenance?
Is that Ethan Hock?
You're asking about the fence, which fence?
Would the wood fence and, or any fence surrounding the property, would that be covered by an association for maintenance reasons, for future?
Okay, so, the black aluminum fence would be located on the retention lot, and that would be maintained by the HOA, and it's my understanding that the wood fence would be maintained by, on the east side, on the backyards of those properties backing up to Petersdorf would be maintained by each individual property owner.
I guess I would ask our village attorney, would that be something that we could ask that the HOA maintains? Just for reasons, if you're riding down, you know, Druckman or another major road, you all different color fences, you should try to keep some formity?
I think what he's asking, and trustee Hopkins, you are barely legible, I'm not sure if you can increase the way that you're able to drop your, you might be able to drop the video, and then your audio might come in better. I believe what he's asking is if we wanted to, and don't quote me on this, you're asking if we can request that the HOA maintain that fence?
That is correct. The HOA can maintain the wood fence for uniformity, so it maintains one color, if it gets damaged, it gets replaced. I, just driving around the village, you see stretches of fence that are different colors, some fences are maintained and some aren't.
I think we can ask that of the developer.
Yeah, he's got thumbs up, I'm sure that isn't, or you can actually put in declarations into the association that require a certain guideline when it comes to the maintenance of the fence. That allows a little bit more flexibility with each homeowner.
Absolutely.
Only question I have, Roberta, is the intersection that's close to Army Trail, is that, are they able to access that going north on Petersdorf?
Right, this is, this is Army Trail?
Yep.
This is Petersdorf.
Yeah. So, if somebody turns and they're going north where all of the high school traffic goes, are they able to turn into the subdivision in that first entrance, or do they have to go down and around?
So...
So, they come off of Army Trail, doesn't matter which way they're coming off of it, but they're going north?
Right, they can turn this way?
Are they able to do that?
Yes.
Is that, how close is it?
Yes, it's a full-access point.
How close is that to the intersection?
Rob, do you know?
Maybe about 150 feet?
I'm just wondering about traffic flow there, especially in the morning.
Let's see, I can't read that number. It's actually, I think, more than that. I think it was closer to 300 feet, because...
I think it's close to, I think it's close to 300 feet.
I agree with that, I think it is 300.
Yeah, this is over 100 feet, and there's some right-of-way space here of about 20 feet, and that, this is also like 140 feet, so, I do believe...
I just, I just know when, when high school kids are late for school, they go a little rapid down that road, you may want to consider, just, I mean, it might even have to happen now, but at some point, you may want to consider requirement of certain timelines when they can take a left turn in there, if anybody's trying to get in there and backing up the high schoolers from getting to school. Most of them come from the other direction, I think, but, just a thought.
We actually made them move that further north, so...
Okay, good. All right. Anybody else?
No. I think with that, we'll send this on to the plan commission for further review.
Thank you for being here, and it looks fantastic.
Great, thank you very much.
Better than the cornfield that's been there since I've been here, forever.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the Southwest Business Park subdivision. The petitioner is requesting a preliminary and final platter subdivision for the 20.54-acre Southwest Business Park, to create five lots ranging in size from 3.14 acres to 6.65 acres. With that, I'll ask Roberta to add anything, but this one seems pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. Yes, so, as you mentioned, it's just over 20 acres, and the Bluff City Office Building is currently located on Lot 1, and Parkland Preparatory Academy is under construction and is located here on proposed Lot 2. So, True North, which is the next agenda item, has submitted a site plan for Lot 4, which would be located here on the subdivision. There's a full-access point down at Southwind Boulevard here, and then Benchmark Lane has a right-in, right-out location here, and the proposed cross-access easement between the two new lots, 4 and 5, would be at this location. As part of the subdivision, the developer would be required to install a bike path and a small berm along the south side of West Bartlett Road, and that is in accordance with the West Bartlett Road corridor plan.
All right, thank you, Roberta. Is there any questions from the committee?
I don't have any.
All right, with that, we'll send this on to the plan commission for further review. Is this something we can get back to the board?
Yeah.
And then get back to committee?
Yeah, we don't need to come back to committee on this, don't think?
No.
All right, perfect. All right, the next item on our agenda is True North. The petitioner is requesting a site plan review for a proposed True North truck stop establishment at the southeast corner of West Bartlett Road in Route 25, in the planned development that we just spoke of. With that, I'll turn it over to Roberta for her presentation.
Okay, thank you, trustee Hopkins. So, this request is for a site plan review for a proposed True North truck stop establishment on the previously mentioned Lot 4 of the Southwind subdivision. Text amendments to the zoning ordinance are also being requested to define truck stop establishment and add truck stop establishment to the special use list in the B4 Community Shopping zoning districts. The Illinois Gaming Board permits truck stop establishments to obtain video gaming licenses, and the petitioner would provide video gaming at this location if the development is approved. They are also requesting special use permits to allow an automobile service station, a truck stop establishment, outdoor sales, and to sell packaged liquor. The truck stop would include a 5,000-square-foot convenience store with eight pump islands for passenger vehicles and four pump stations for diesel trucks. So, the passenger vehicle gas pumps would be located here, and then east of that would be the diesel canopy and those pumps. The building would be constructed with stone masonry and ephes with metal canopies proposed over the windows and the front entrance of the building. Staff has requested the posts for the fuel canopies to be wrapped with the same materials as the building's facade, as was requested by the plan commission and proved by this board for the recent 7/11 up on Lake Street. And the column cladding, which I have a picture of here, that the petitioner has submitted, does not architecturally match the building. I'm going to go back to the site plan. So, the site plan identifies a full-access curb cut along the east property line, shown here, and it is, let's see, in the east property line, that is on the cross-access easement, providing access down to Benchmark Lane. There are two access points proposed onto Benchmark Lane to the south. The eastern curb cut, which would provide full access, enabling trucks to enter the diesel fuel pumps, along with providing access for passenger vehicles, and then the western curb cut, shown here, that would be an exit-only, with painted markings indicating it as a right out and left out. So, the movements would go this way and this way. So, the staff and the village's traffic consultant have some concerns with this western curb cut here, as shown, and we have requested one of the following modifications. One, eliminate the curb cut in its entirety. Two, modify it to a right-in, right-out only with a barrier median. Or C, redesign the curb cut to a right-out only. Staff believes that, as currently shown, this access point could potentially be blocked while vehicles attempt to turn left into the site, resulting in an increased potential for backup onto Route 25. The petitioner is also requesting a variation to reduce the number of trees required in the interior parkway along West Bartlett Road and on Route 25. And again, as previously mentioned, they would be putting in a bike path, as shown here, along West Bartlett Road, as part of the West Bartlett Road corridor plan. So, I have, the petitioner has requested a video, if I can pull this up.
True North was founded in 1999 when the family-owned Lyden Company formed an equity joint venture with Shell Oil Company. The Lyden Company, now known as True North Holdings, has been in business for over 100 years, with both the third and fourth generation leading the growth and the development. True North now has over 140 company-operated stores and 185 dealer stores. We represent Shell in various major metropolitan across Ohio, Michigan, as well as the Chicagoland area. As a company that is now over 100 years old, I am proud to be the CEO and continue to build upon the culture formed by generations before me. We are proud of the culture we have and the pride ourselves in being involved in the communities we serve. When we go to a community and invest, we want to be an asset to those communities. While our developments are accretive to tax revenue, provide construction and retail jobs, we also pride ourselves on ensuring our developments fit within the communities we are entering. We keep our stores well-maintained, well-landscaped, safe and inviting. We are proud to provide both fuel and convenience offerings to the residents of the community we are privileged to serve. We look forward to serving you, and hopefully, your community can be the home of our future True North development.
True North is highly selective when choosing the home of each of our gasoline and convenience developments, using community attractiveness and strategic fit with its brand as selection criteria. The True North brand is positioned as a premium brand, just by our true sheet quality through all we deliver. The materials used to construct the facilities, overall appearance inside and out, fuel and convenience products provided, and great staff deliver fast, friendly, and clean service to each of our guests. True North's latest prototype features a 4,200-square-foot contemporary building primarily composed of natural materials, utilizing brick and limestone on all sides. The fueling forecourt usually includes six to eight gasoline dispensing units with the ability to fuel from 12 to 16 vehicles simultaneously, covered with Shell's globally-recognized, modern, but clean canopy image. Clean LED lighting is used on both the interior and exterior of the facility. All surfaces are composed of concrete with no asphalt used on site. We use strong, often more expensive, materials in our developments, but believe the additional investment upfront pays for itself in terms of delivering a representative identity over the long term. Accordingly, we are proactive related to maintenance and capital reinvestment. We also have a philosophy of keeping our locations contemporary and relevant. As we speak, we are completely remodeling sites we built new less than 10 years ago.
Through its company operation, True North provides fuel and convenience retailing to guests at approximately 140 locations, while providing fuel to another 185 independent dealer locations. Through all of the knowledgeable, hard-working, and dedicated employees, we offer each guest fast, friendly, and clean stores. We operate our True North locations where they're own staff, not through franchisees or independent operators like some national or international convenience store chains. This allows us to maintain a high bar related to standards, policies, procedures, and control of our operations. We have a script for nearly every square foot of what should be in our stores and how it should look, down to the backroom informational fact force. This culture ensures we are successful in delivering our brand promise. Our stores are adequately staffed and the staff are well-trained, always delivering what we call a true GX, or guest experience. It is quite amazing to see some of the loyal relationships that develop between our staff and the guests and the communities where they work. Let me show you around the store. We offer a wide variety of gourmet, premium, true brew coffee, and cappuccino, with a full assortment of creamers, so you can make it just like you do at home. We have 20 flavors on the found lineup, with chunky and chewy ice, in either a plastic or foam cup, whichever you prefer. We also have a wide assortment of other refreshments, including your favorite traditional or craft beers in our North Pole beer game. If you need a sandwich, you could always find something which hits the spot in our grab-and-go cooler. And our restrooms are not your typical gas station restrooms. With tile throughout and always kept clean, we even earn mom's approval.
Okay, the petitioners are here, and they would like to introduce themselves to the board, so if you want to socially distance and step up.
Are you the one that brought popcorn for the movie?
I can introduce everybody. So, my name is Lindsay Lyden, I'm the vice president of development for True North. I'm also a fourth-generation owner, working actively in the business. Our team today consists of our Mark Lyden, our president and our CEO, Ryan Howard, our chief operating officer, Tim Shoemaker, our engineer on the project, Louis Abuna from KALOA, our traffic consultant, and Dean Kelly, the property owner. And we are happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project. We are very excited to potentially be coming into Bartlett, it's a great community, and hopefully, the site of the next True North gas station. We have a, we have many sites throughout the greater Chicagoland area, primarily in DuPage and Lake Counties, if you guys have been around. We have a site in the West Chicago area, Elmhurst, Naperville, Downers Grove, Henover Park, Libertyville, Lake Zurich, our two new ones are in Lake Zurich and Buffalo Grove that we opened this year, and we are currently under construction in Waukegan, on Green Bay and Washington. And then, for, we have sites that we are working on in Deer Park, and around Lake Beach, and in Gray's Lake. So, Bartlett would be a great addition to our sites up here.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, I would echo that. Thank you for choosing Bartlett to, for your next future site. I also would like to just make a comment that in your video presentation, you had brick on some of your canopy columns, and you wanted to make a change to the cladding on your canopy columns at this particular location. If you could elaborate that, on that a little bit?
So, we are more than happy to change those to brick to match the building.
Is that, is that mic on? Is that mic on?
I might just need to, I just need to step a little closer. Sorry, I was trying to socially distance from the microphone.
I don't think any droplets are going to jump off the microphone, just don't put your mouth on it.
Yeah, so, we, we put in some white ACM canopy cladding columns at a lot of our locations. We are more than happy to change those to brick to match the facade of the building.
The only question I have while you're up there is, obviously, the, Roberta had some questions about some changes that we would be requesting according to our staff. Are those things that are acceptable to, or have you had the chance to review those possible changes?
I'll let our engineer, Tim Shoemaker, answer those questions for you.
Hi, Tim Shoemaker with RTM Engineering, 650 Algonquin Road, Schaumburg. I believe our traffic engineer is also on the Zoom call, he can probably address it better. Basically, we would like to keep that access as a right-out, left-out. We don't want customers to get down there and essentially get trapped into turning north on Route 25 unnecessarily. As it is right now, we feel that this is going to work for us and not cause any problems with the site.
Don't you think most people are going to exit out the backside anyway, I would guess? Because that gives you better access to get either direction?
We'd hope so.
Yeah, so, help me understand the traffic flow, because the thing that concerns me about this, getting in and out of these, is when you have semis going in and out of there. So, the traffic flow of a semi going in and out of there, how would that work? Where are they entering most, they'd have to enter from Benchmark Road, right? Or is there, is there room for them to come in from the other entrance?
Semis can head northbound to eastbound on Benchmark and make the turn at that extra-wide entrance and get in. Or if they're going east on Bartlett, they can turn south on the access road, go past, and loop around.
So, they'd have to make the loop around, that would, that's the way that they would get in there?
Yes.
Okay. And most likely, they're always going to be going out that back exit?
Most of them will probably be heading north on 25.
Okay. So, that's, that's something that you would prefer not changing.
Correct.
So, I'm sure that if, as we move forward, that's going to be under discussions with our traffic people and your traffic people?
We expect it.
Okay. What other ideas, Roberta, I'll lean on you to suggest, you had another change, I think, that you were anticipating, was that just in the facade?
That was, that was a, they agreed to the brick column, so...
Okay. That's all I have, and thanks for you all being here.
I have one comment I'd like to make also, since it's been raised, the issue's been raised by staff, and you have to have a presentation before the ZBA and Plan Commission. I think that you have to have, be prepared to have a Plan B, because this will be an issue, I would think, with the ZBA and Plan Commission, well, specifically the Plan Commission, so.
Yeah, a little close to 25.
I didn't understand it.
It appears that that right-in, right-out, or right-in, left-out is pretty close to Route 25. I don't know what's exact, distance from 25, but we've seen that at other intersections. Now that you're putting trucks there, you know, somebody that's not able to turn is going to block that whole excess, that could be a problem.
I think it might, I'm sorry, who is that?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that left-out is problematic.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you've heard some comments from the board. I'm sure with 140 locations, there's some examples you can show us and maybe prove us wrong, that's similar to this setup, and that's been around there for quite some time. Maybe you can come up with some examples and say, hey, you know what, this is how this traffic's flowing, this is almost exactly the same as your footprint and how it's working. So, I think we'd be curious, and I'm sure the Plan Commission would be curious to see those statistics.
I don't, I don't see it, but I still have to ask the question. I mean, there's no place for permanent trailer parking here, unless they're getting serviced?
There are two spaces, I'm pointing to them right now.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, those are for service, not for, you know, rent, or, you know... Okay, those are for service, not for, you know, rent or, you know?
They're just to park, so if they want to run into the store, they can.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
One, one last question off-site. Do we have any indication as to when we're going to connect the bike path out west?
So it's my understanding that IDOT is going to do some small minor improvements on Route 25, and those include road surfacing, just resurfacing the roadway for about seven and a half miles from 72 down to south of this site on Dunham. They are also including ADA improvements at the intersection, which would include crosswalks and ramps. They want to, with those crosswalks, they want to sync the signals for those pedestrians to be able to cross, and until that is done, the paths are not, from South Elgin and in Bartlett, will not be completed entirely to the very curb line of the intersection. But it's my understanding that IDOT was supposed to, this spring, have that bid out, and I don't know if that's happened because of COVID.
Okay. Do you think we would be able to follow up with them?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. I mean, we know how well they perform on Route 59, hopefully they'll do better on Route 25.
Let's see, Ranky, I concur. I hope it happens a little faster than 59 has started.
All right, is there any other questions from the committee? No.
Nope?
Nope.
All right, well, I'm, I'm happy with the design. I think as long as our traffic engineers and consultants agree with their design, that would be acceptable to me. As far as the brick, I appreciate True North making that change to the brick for the canopy columns. I'm excited about them hopefully getting approved and moving forward. With that, we'll send this on to the zoning board of appeals and the plan commission for further review and to conduct the required public hearing. That's all we have under building and zoning tonight, President Wallace.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins, and that's all we have on our committee of the whole meeting this evening. Again, thank you all for representing True North, and we really appreciate your presence here, it really means a lot, shows your support for the project. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Hopkins with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Gabranja?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.